Good afternoon, everyone. Calling to order this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for January 6th, 2022. Before we get into the approval of minutes, I just want to make the board aware of my day today. It has been extremely hectic and there's a couple of items on here that I'm just not going to be ready to discuss. We took in almost 9,095 masks today, thanks to Rick and Home Kits, and it's just been a very, very, very hectic day. So just wanted to lay the groundwork for today. I will do my best.
I need to add something to the agenda.
And so do I, if I may.
Sure.
You first, Rufus.
I need to add Zoom meeting protocol.
So we would need, can you just put that in the form of a motion? And where would you like it added?
I don't care where it goes. Sometime before we adjourn. I moved that we add
A 9.7.
9.7. Zoom meeting protocol to the agenda.
Second.
Thank you.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
What do you have, Glenn?
Can I add 9.8, I'm assuming here? Discussion of possible Wi-Fi access in the Swift House and the Community House.
Second the motion.
Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Uh, hold on.
Sorry, sorry.
I'm still the chair.
All right, sorry, sorry.
I'm just writing this down so I can catch up on, say it correctly when we get there.
I'm sorry.
Okay. We have a second. Any questions? Discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. So we have four sets of meetings to approve. I'll make a motion that we approve to approve the November 16th, November 22nd, December 14th, and December 22nd Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
Second.
Thank you. I have just a couple of typos. Oh, where did they go? One second. For the December 14th minutes, just a typo to correct treasurer's report. The word treasurer was incorrectly spelled. On page four, the word New Vance was misspelled. It reads as Nuance. It should be New Vance. The first bolded item. And I will, the resolution for that EMPG performance, the regional performance grant needs to be added to these minutes, which I will send to you, Joyce. And then under primary care in Kent at the bottom of page four, it reads Gene Speck reported that her focus will be on Sharon Hospital. I'd like that corrected to Gene Speck reported that her, that New Vance's proposal for discontinuation of maternity services at Sharon Hospital will take precedence and this item will be removed from the agenda. I think that was it. Any other corrections? Did we get a chance to review them? Rufus and Glenn?
Yep, yep, nothing I have.
Rufus, you look like you were gonna say something.
No, I it's, it's not important.
Okay. So Joyce, the, can you read the motion back? You're on mute, Joyce.
I'm sorry, I stepped away.
Oh, can you, can you read the motion back for the approval of the minutes?
Jean Speck made a motion to approve the minutes of 11:16, 11:22, 12:14, 12:22. And then there were several typo corrections. On 12:14, the treasurer was misspelt. New Vance was misspelt. The resolution needed to be added, and then you changed the primary care on the bottom of page four.
Great. All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Correspondence? It's like we have no correspondence, Joyce?
I did not receive any.
Okay, public comment?
I have one.
Kaylin?
I just would like you guys to talk about the five-year capital plan. Because traditionally, in the last decade or so, it has been presented at the annual town meeting. And it's not, I realize this year is a different, a slightly different timeframe where you didn't get the information back as quickly. But it, it really should be shared with the public before May. So I would just ask that you guys talk about it at some point of how that process is going to be changed because the timing has changed this year.
Okay, it's not on this agenda? And Barbara doesn't, we haven't gotten the capital plan. As far as I know, correct, Joyce? We have not gotten the capital plan. The deadline isn't until tomorrow. So we don't have the capital plan to share with the public yet. When we have it, we will, it'll come up for discussion in our meeting, probably the next meeting in two weeks. Not sure if there's really anything more to say about that.
Yeah, I understand. I just want to make sure that it was highlighted, particularly for Rufus and Glenn, who might not know that normally is at the annual town meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Any other public comment? We will move on to the Tree Warden report, which we did not get one this month. Correct, Joyce?
Correct.
I don't see one. Okay. We did not get an assessor's report. I know that Barbara is shoulder-deep in multiple projects. I don't see treasurer's report. Tax refunds, we have one tax refund. For, I'll make it in the form of a motion to approve tax, one tax refund for the amount of $339.72.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
I.
Thank you. New business. Do we have Lynn H? I see you on there. Park and Rec Commission, new hire recommendation for Park and Rec Director. I'm going to hand off to Lynn Harrington. Thanks Lynn for coming on camera.
Sure. Hi. So we did have a commission meeting where we made a motion to bring forth a candidate. And I believe Julia Neff should be here, and she's gonna tell you the motion that we made.
Great. The Park and Recreation Commission hereby recommends to the Board of Selectmen the hiring of Jared Kaczynski as the Town of Kent's Park and Recreation Director. The position being offered is full-time, a 40-hour work week with a starting salary of $60,000. And the town's current full-time fringe benefit package. The duties of the position are outlined in the Park and Recreation Director job description that was approved on September 20th, 2021. The employment start date is to be mutually agreed upon between the town and Jared Kaczynski.
We would like to ask the Board of Selectmen to approve our recommendation.
So thanks for that, Julia and Lynn. I'm looking at the budget for that salary line.
Yes, it is his starting pay will be in our next budget. We are halfway through this one, and we have enough funds to cover that.
So the budgeted salary for fiscal year 21, 22, just so the board understands, was $54,024. Do we have? So I would like to enter into executive session just to have a discussion. So I will put that in the form of a motion. You with me, Joyce? I've lost track of you on the pains here. There you are.
Are you inviting anybody in, and why are you going into executive session?
I was, yeah, I was getting there. I just wanted to make sure that, that you were hearing me. Make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the recommendation made by the Park and Rec Commission. And to include Lynn Harrington and Julia Neff. And the board, obviously, and Joyce Kearns.
At 4:14?
At 4:14, yes. Thank you.
Second.
So Joyce is gonna pop everybody into the waiting room, talk amongst yourselves virtually, and I appreciate it. Thanks, everybody, for persevering with us. So on the, but on the item 9.1, I don't see us taking any action tonight. I would like to schedule a special meeting for Monday as soon as possible. Joyce, so it's 5:10 now. We get the agenda in in the morning. And we can do an in-person meeting on Monday morning at some point. What's the, what is your scheduling look like, Glenn, Rufus?
I'm flexible.
I'm wide open.
I'm gonna pick a time, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock? What, does 11 o'clock work better for you, Joyce, with the possible snow?
Yes, please.
Okay.
11 o'clock.
11 o'clock.
We'll get that out tomorrow. 9.2 Transfer Station Manager, Rick, you're up. The new hire recommendation for Transfer Station Attendant.
Right now, there is none. We ran an ad, nobody answered the ad, so I did speak to one that was working here formerly previously, and he's plans on moving back here in February, so I'm gonna try and rehire him if he comes comes back, but until he comes back, I don't know for sure.
Okay. Why don't we repost the position then, so we can at least get some airtime and maybe get some candidates for you to consider?
All right.
Highway Department, don't go anywhere, Rick. New, new hire recommendation for CDL Maintainer.
Last month, we recommended we hire Mr. Town, I believe it was. Robert Town, was it? In the time that we offered the job to him, he decided to go to work for the Town of Warren instead of us. So we would like to offer the position to Luke Beletti now at the same compensation than there were the others.
So if we can go over we should go back into executive session to discuss this with the other board members. And make a motion to enter into an executive session to discuss the CDL Maintainer hire, new hire recommendation with the board, Rick and Joyce Kearns.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Hi. Is that everybody, Joyce?
Yes.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone. I will make a motion to hire Luke Beletti as the new CDL Maintainer for an hourly rate of $30.85 to start with a start date of January 10th.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Great. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thanks, everybody.
Dean, could you spell his last name, please? Or Rick?
Yeah, Rick or Joyce?
Joyce has it in front of her, I believe it's B-E-L-L-E-T-T-I.
Correct. Thank you.
For 9.4 Town Meeting Agenda Approval. Of our annual town meeting coming up.
At the, at our last regular meeting, we mentioned that it was gonna be at the Community House, but in the legal notice that I see here, it says Kent Town Hall. So there's a discrepancy there, first of all. To point that out. Number two, on Thursday, January 20th, it says we have a regular Board of Selectmen meeting at 6:30, annual town meeting at 7:00.
Yep.
It'll be a short meeting.
Something's gotta give there.
Right, so we'll, we'll have to reschedule that meeting.
Yeah. So if I'd like to bring this up, if I can, I, I know that at that December 14th meeting, I wanted to have an in-person meeting, if we could. I realized that a town hall meeting is a little different from regular meetings such as this, where people have to, to vote and figuring out registration and all that was difficult. Which is why I, I, I voted as I did. However, a lot has changed in the last three weeks. Omicron variant. The pandemic has really ramped up against all of us, and I would like to consider, I would like for us to consider a Zoom event for that town hall meeting.
So in order to stay on track, I'm gonna make, and we can get into discussion, because that would be a change in the agenda. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the town meeting agenda that was distributed. Need a second till we can get into discussion.
Even with the, even with the mistake that's on it?
That was updated, Glenn. If you go back in the folder, that was already fixed.
Oh, I'm sorry, my bad, sorry.
Oh, I'm looking in the, in the copy from the folder, and it still says Town Hall. So let's, if I can get a second, we'll get into discussion.
Second.
Thanks. So Joyce, you said you made the correction on a
I did.
Okay. I agree, obviously, strongly with Glenn. I voted against meeting in person in the, at the December 14th meeting. What's happening right now is obviously, everybody knows what hap, what's happening right now. I think we need to protect the public's health. We've we huddled after the last town meeting about how to improve that experience and that interaction. And I think that we can get it right this time, as right as you can get, you know, a large meeting. Again, we're doing the best we can, but I think protecting the public, I mean, it has to come first, and I think putting, you know, 40, 50 people in that room where we're hearing, you know, every day I hear about surgical masks are no longer enough, and 95s, which I have almost 9,000 of them sitting in my office right now for distribution. That's, that's how we're going to slow this spread. I know people continue to be very, very COVID-fatigued, but we need to protect the public. The hospitals are getting overwhelmed. It's, and we're not at the peak. We're not gonna be at the peak for probably another three weeks. So I'm gonna put forth a friendly amendment or just an amendment that we move the meeting to a virtual meeting via the Zoom platform and include that information on the agenda.
I would also think that we should put in a note that if you want to participate, you better start doing it in a half an hour before the meeting starts.
Yeah, we'll send out all the full instructions as we have for the previous three or four. I can't remember at this point. So procedurally, Joyce, we need the original motion maker. So I'm, I was the original motion maker. I'm putting forth an amendment. We need the person who seconded it to second that amendment.
One.
So Glenn, we need you to second the amendment that would be changing to a Zoom platform meeting.
I will second.
Thanks. So now we'll go into discussion on this amendment. Any discussion? So Rufus, we're gonna work with a tech person, the same tech person from Kent School that we worked with last time, who actually gave us the recommendation to move, to add a Zoom room where we can put one of the big issues was getting once the meeting started, we could no longer verify those licenses, because we didn't want other people seeing someone's driver's license. And just being able to do those two things at the same time was impossible. So by adding a Zoom room where people would go from the waiting room to a Zoom room, get verified, and then come into the meeting if they were late, and, and coming into the meeting after it started should solve that problem, so that we're verifying every person as they're coming into the meeting, even if they're late to the meeting. So that's, that's the, one of the solutions that, that came up after the last town meeting.
I move to move
So we'll
No discussion at this point. Jean, let's vote.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment?
Hi.
Hi. Now we'll vote on the main motion, which is to approve the
Wait, we have a hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lynn. Thank you.
The, the document that I'm seeing in the Google Drive folder doesn't list Park and Rec members. Normally, the Park and Rec Commission members are listed. Because it's kind of like an election. I know it's not, I've been told it's not exactly an election, but normally the people are listed, and maybe it's been updated, but it has.
Oh, yeah, cuz I do see
unless there's a separate document that is not showing in my drive, but
I can't speak for Google. I updated it in the Google Drive. I don't know why it didn't share, but it is updated, and I'm gonna have to generate a new one with Zoom regardless.
Thanks, just wanted to check, so you guys didn't forget to do that.
So we'll vote on the, the main motion to approve the annual town meeting agenda, which includes a Zoom.
If you'd like, since you're making a, just as a thought, you're having a meeting on Monday, I can clean it up and have it, you can vote on it on Monday.
That sounds fantastic. So you'll add the names, even though I see there's a colon, it looks like it was just a
Correct. I can put a new one out with the Zoom and the Park and Rec on it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Board of Selectmen Resolution Regarding Meeting Recordings, 9.5.
On the table that you had open.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I will, thank you. I'm gonna rescind my motion. Simple and clean? Joyce? 9.5 Board of Selectmen Resolution Regarding Meeting Recordings. So this was a follow-up to a number of discussions that we've had regarding the various boards, commissions, and their subcommittees, sort of conducting a couple of different processes when it comes to recording their meetings, whether audio or video, and having them available to the public. I had a good, long conversation with Randy, and I'm gonna put forth the following motion that I will put on a screen share so that folks can see it. Give me one second. So I will, oops, got a pitch here. Make the following motion. The Board of Selectmen resolves that each municipal board and commission, or any subcommittee thereof, shall video record all such meetings and proceedings. If video capabilities are not available, all meetings and proceedings must be audio recorded. Recording shall be sent to the town clerk to be posted on the town's website, not later than seven days after the meeting. This resolution shall take effect immediately and is in addition to filing requirements of meeting minutes in accordance with Connecticut FOI Act. I'll take a second so we can get to discussion.
Second.
Thanks. So in speaking with Randy and then brainstorming with Joyce, Donna, and Darlene about this, we wanted to make sure that we're setting a consistent expectation so that the public doesn't have to keep chasing after, well, this commission does it this way, this commission does it this way. This makes it consistent all across all boards and commissions and subcommittees thereof. And the, the piece about getting it posted to the town's website is right from the And the, the piece about getting it posted to the town's website is right from the recent public act. That made some changes to FOI. And this was at the recommendation of the town attorney. And it adds in the flexibility if there is not the ability for video recording that an audio recording can also be captured.
Seems very clear.
So for subcommittees who. Has the ability to start the Zoom meeting or the, you know, the video meeting? I'm assuming Joyce has to do that.
Um, some of the subcommittees have been running their own Zoom meetings. Some of them have had Joyce there as support. Ideally, we want those subcommittees doing this themselves. We have to look in to see if we're need to purchase more licenses for Zoom. But it's, it's all doable. Donna, you have your hand up. Do we still need this on screen share?
No.
Something's muted.
How about now?
Perfect. Okay.
Um, just can you add at the end of that according to the FOI and, and any applicable state statutes? Because I've got timing on. Requirements that come to me underneath the. The planning and zoning and inland, that state statutes.
Oh, so it's, which is different from the seventies?
Yeah.
Okay.
In some instances it is, some it's not, but at least it's where you're picking up both.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
So app, any applicable. State statutes.
Yes.
Yep. Darlene, just getting your perspective on the. That edit.
Again, it's not gonna affect the. Resolution being put forward. It's in addition, in addition to, so.
So I will make an amendment to add. And any applicable, can I get general statutes to the end of the resolution? And we need the seconder to second that amendment.
Second.
Thank you. So voting on the amendment to add that phrase, all those in favor? I, thank you. Now we'll vote on the main motion. That reads, the Board of Selectmen resolves that each municipal board and commission or any subcommittee thereof shall video record all such meetings and proceedings. If video capabilities are not available, all meetings and proceedings must be audio recorded. Recording shall be sent to the town clerk to be posted on the town's website, not later than seven days after the meeting. This resolution shall take effective, effect immediately and is in addition to filing requirements of meeting minutes in accordance with Connecticut FOI Act. And applicable and any applicable Connecticut general statutes. And that was in the form of a motion. Thank you. Any other questions or discussions? Seeing no hands up except Darlene's with her halo. That's fine. It's great.
Um, I just wanna make sure to follow up who's going to be responsible to contact all the boards and submissions. And make sure they know that this has been passed and, you know, manage the, if they need, you know, so.
Assistance.
Just so that that's publicly noted that. Who's going to take care of that?
Yep, I was gonna say that as soon as we. Voted on the motion, but yeah. My office will. Come up with instructions and will help any of the chairs of boards, commissions and subcommittees with. Any technical assistance that they need and Joyce and I will look at Zoom, you know, additional Zoom. Licenses that we might need. So yes, we'll. Be on that. Any further? Questions? I appreciate the help of Joyce, Donna, Darlene, Randy. It was definitely a group effort to get this worded properly. So we'll take a vote. All those in favor? I. Thank you. Very much appreciate it. Nine point six medic four contracts. I'll make a motion to enter into executive session. With the board and Joyce Kearns to discuss the medic for contract.
Second.
All those, I'm sorry, at five thirty-nine, all those in favor?
I.
I. Rufus. I'll set Joyce, everybody in.
Yes.
Thanks. Nine point seven Zoom meeting protocol. Rufus.
I have a question. How do you conduct a ballot vote? On a Zoom meeting?
So the way that we've done it in the recent past is through what's called a Zoom poll. And it's. An electronic poll that is created prior to the meeting with whatever motion and. Those are, that can be conducted with. Via an anonymous poll so that it would be mimicking the in-person experience of a secret ballot. So there's no record of the votes. It just gives you the aggregate. Some of the, the motion or whatever the topic is that you're. Doing the poll.
So who? How do you set that up?
I get set up before. When you create the Zoom. Instance, the Zoom meeting, you, there's an option to create polls.
Other, if Joyce is setting up the meeting, she doesn't. With the commissioner, the board. Ahead of time.
Yeah, so just a, for instance, for the. Town meeting a couple of weeks ago. We had the motions and so for the annual town meeting, we would take the motion language exactly from the agenda. We would create a poll question and then we put the two answers, you know, answer choices, yes, no, and then. We hit save and. Sorry, and then you save it and it's there for the meeting. So when we're in the meeting. The host and any co-host will see in your toolbar at the bottom where you have your mute video participants chat. They'll also see an icon that says polls and any host or co-host can launch. The poll and it's all figured out beforehand who's gonna do, run that technology piece. And it's all done right on the screen, so it would pop up in front of everything else on your screen. It would pop up in front of all the panes and it would say, you know, do you prefer crunchy peanut butter or smooth peanut? Or do you prefer crunchy peanut butter? As the question and then people would choose yes or no. And as, once the poll is closed, once we see that everybody has voted, who's eligible to vote. Then the poll is closed and the results are shared on the screen. It's another button that you click. And those results are shared to everybody on the meeting.
Okay. So it has to be set up ahead of time.
Yes, if you're really savvy and snazzy, you can set it up on the fly, but I don't recommend it. It's, it's not really useful for our ad hoc motions. It's really best for, you know, something that's pre-written, you know, in Allah, a town meeting. Item.
All right. So, and, and you can have a different format, like. It doesn't have to be yes, no, it could be A or B.
There has, there has to be at least two choices because.
Right. If there's two choices. It doesn't have to be a yes, no choice. It can be choice A or choice B.
Sure, it could, you know, if you were asking, what's your favorite popsicle flavor? You could put raspberry, strawberry and lemon.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Nine point eight possible Wi-Fi in Swifton Community House.
I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion. In fact, plenty of documents are in the. Drive.
Okay, but didn't you, didn't you add it to the agenda?
I know it's odd, but. I was.
Because that was, it should have been on the agenda, I think. Shouldn't it? Wasn't the original request to have it on the agenda?
I put it on.
Glenn's, yeah.
But the documents are in there, but I want to recuse. That's okay.
So there's a document called Internet at Swift House?
Yes.
So the chamber wants internet at the Swift House.
Oh, okay. I got it.
They are willing to arrange the installation, but the question is, really? If they do that, will the town? Take that expense, monthly expense and deduct it from the. From the, what we charge them as rent.
So unfortunately, the chamber can't. Just take on that task. It's a municipal building, so Joyce would need to. Handle it through our. Internet service provider, which I think is Spectrum, right Joyce?
Yes.
So can you just talk about that process? So it's a, because it's a municipal building, we, if, if the chamber decided, set up. Internet access, but then they decided that they were gonna move the, the office of their director. And they didn't, they wanted to discontinue that. It, it's just a, it makes sense for the, for us to do it because it's a municipal building. Because we would also need to get a Wi-Fi. Hub to have in there, you know, there would be. Hardware that we would need to arrange for and add it to our, our IT folks. Sort of. List of what they're managing. Sam?
I would like to heartily endorse that it be added to the facility because it would also be of great use to anyone else who's using the building.
Sure. So Joyce, can we talk about budget?
Yes.
Um. Numbers, is this something that is? There's funding available in the budget?
Uh, there is, there's money in the budget. I spoke to Spectrum and the quote that I got is a hundred and nineteen dollars for each location. And a monthly with a ninety-nine dollar one-time connection fee. So.
What is the monthly?
One hundred and nineteen.
A month?
Yes, ma'am. For the next six months, end of this fiscal year, it'd be eight hundred and thirteen dollars for each location.
What do you mean each location?
Community house and Swift House.
Okay.
I thought this was just for the Swift House. This is the community house also.
That was part of Glenn's ad was both.
Addition.
Yeah.
And I also checked on the Swift House because the senior center, so it's the same price for each building.
And there's no kind of package deal that they can offer to the town because it has multiple locations.
Not at this time.
And they would be built together?
No.
It's what happens when there's no competition.
What's, what takes place in the community house?
Used as a rental for special events. It's used as the food bank. Anything else, Joyce?
Sometimes there's meetings, the library uses it for events. There's parties, weddings. People have asked in the past if we had it there and, and we have not had it to this point.
It's overdue. I think it would be a. I'm sure Joyce, you probably get a number of. Folks who are renting it, asking if there's Wi-Fi in the building.
I do.
It's. I don't think I need to explain it to anybody that it's, it's a basic. Sort of necessity. So I, can I ask Glenn, why are you accusing yourself? You have a conflict?
Uh, the source of the emails. Yes.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. So Joyce, you said there's money in the, in this year's budget to fund this.
Which location are you talking about? The Swift House?
I was talking about both cuz that's what the agenda item.
Yes, that, yes.
Okay, and what about a? Any additional hardware?
You did not indicate that.
Normally a setup includes a modem.
Right.
You know, that's, that's part of their monthly charge unless you wanna buy your own modem and not pay them. You could ask them about that, Joyce.
I think we use the. Do we use the ISP modems here at the town hall? Think we do. I'd like to just check with Ucatac to see if there's anything else that. They would need to add on to this because it's, it's now gonna be municipal access. To the internet. They have a number of cybersecurity things in place for town hall and it should, you know, ideally be the same. So I'm, I, I think we can. I'd like to hold off on this to the next meeting so that we can just get the proper pricing and, and what our. IT folks, if they need anything further. Are you good with that Rufus?
I, I agree.
Would cybersecurity be a requirement for the other buildings where?
It's all because it's municipal government. We have to. We have to be, be within the cybersecurity.
But if.
If they're separate, I'm not sure that's.
Yeah, if, if Swift House isn't, doesn't house offices of the municipal government and they're not official municipal. Events that are taking place there other than perhaps social. Is there any need for cybersecurity in that location?
I'm gonna defer.
A lot more?
No. I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to Ucatac, a conversation with Ucatac. It's still municipal access. It's still the municipality is responsible for the access.
Well, let's see what they say.
Yeah. Yeah. Where are we? Ten point one Town Hall Large Meeting Room Video Conference System Update.
Can I talk a little bit about this?
Of course.
I um, I really appreciate having the um, supporting documents in the Google Drive. I could take a look at all this stuff. Um, I saw Litchfield Stereo Design. You know, they came in with a price of what, twenty four thousand dollars? Um, I could see where all of that was, was laid out pretty clearly. A lot of that was the actual two um, smart TVs. Uh, an eighty-five inch for three thousand eight hundred dollars, seventy-five inch for two thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, those are very expensive machines. Um, I actually looked on both Best Buy and Walmart to see if those numbers matched up and uh, lo and behold, they do. So, so nothing was um, nothing was, uh, there's no inflation there with uh, Litchfield Stereo Design, but you know, we've seen them and they're very expensive and who knows if that's worth it. Um, I did look at uh, the Ucatech version, which uh, has seven thousand, uh, seven hundred. Much lower total price. Um, and um, there are two smart TVs involved with that one as well. Um, one, uh, a thousand forty-four dollars. Uh, a Samsung seventy-five inch. I looked up that on Walmart and Best Buy and that goes for usually two thousand eight hundred. So uh, Ucatech seems to be giving us a, a deal on that particular TV. Um, the other one, the other TV is very inexpensive relatively, uh, at five sixty-nine, that's about the same. So, so I just, I was just looking at various prices. I, I, I mean, with these, with these companies, were, were they, were they giving us the right deal and uh, they seem to be doing that. Um, but uh, the Logitech uh, Re- Rally Plus solution uh, as part of this Ucatech, uh, that one piece there. Um, on YouTube, there's a bunch of YouTube videos on how that works. Um, uh, where people go, how the actual system works. Uh, so um, I'll be watching that tonight. Uh, but I also read a bunch of reviews on, on, on Logitech as well and uh, they're all quite positive. Um, and I've talked to other people out there in the world who, who set this, set these things up and they said Logitech uh, Rally is pretty good. So just to say that I really appreciate all of this being in the Google Drive. I could do some research. I can check it out. Um, what, what I really wanna do moving forward is actually, you know, talking to people uh, in Town Hall and and beyond who are going to use this the most. To actually go into Town Hall, the large Town Hall meeting and to walk around and see how this works. Um, and um, and then just to ask questions. I mean, is, is, is the uh, is Town Hall the way to go? I mean, is uh, is, you know, sh- should we have a system maybe in the community house? Because that's a little bigger. Pros or cons, I'll just throw that out. Um, do we do more than one room in Town Hall? Do we do the three? Um, but nevertheless, I mean, these are, these are just questions that um, that I would like, you know, just answers to. I'd like to just ask people moving forward. Uh, what they, what they think. Uh, and again, I appreciate seeing all this. So um, so I, you know, I don't know if we need a resolution to this tonight. I'm not prepared for it. Uh, but um, and then of course, how to fund all of this, but that's, that's, that's an interesting story as well. Uh, but um, if Gina Rufus, you have anything to add about this?
Yeah, I would like.
It's really about the funding.
I would like to add that um, you know, I was, uh, eighty-five inch TV, um. I mean, there, there are sometimes when I'm driving down the road and I see, uh, I can identify what people are watching in their living room as I drive by. Because they have one of these things and I'm nowhere near the screen. Um, I don't think we need three televisions in the Town Hall, i- i- in that room. One big one in front, at that size is plenty in my mind. I ca- I, I can't see justifying spending that kind of money for three of these gigantic screens in that room. So um, I did the same thing Glenn, that you did. I started looking up other prices. Um, and uh, you know, Ucatech did seem to be cutting better deals. I don't know how well some of the refurbished equipment that they quoted stands up, but um, it's a start. I appreciate having the information ahead of time, but it's not enough um, to make any kind of um, decision tonight and I also um, the funding has to be clearly elucidated. So that's where I'm at.
And I saw you turn your video on. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I know Glenn had just suggested doing it um, in the uh, in the Town um, Community House. For people who have four or five commissions that they need to be working with, picking up all my files and dragging them over there is definitely not in my scope of understanding. Oh, um, I, I would, i- if you're gonna do anything, then I would just say, yeah, the large meeting room would be the way to go.
Okay.
Are, is Town Hall set up, Donna, so that um, you can access all your stuff if you have the computer set up in the in the big meeting room?
Well, what I, what I do is I accept all my applications via the PDF format, so I have the meeting folder, just like Joyce has set up. But a lot of times, there's a lot of history that needs, there are questions that come up about past uses of property. Um, things that are not necessarily in the file. So I have my meetings in Town Hall. And then I have access to the building files and the health files and everything else. So they're not, not every file is, is is electronic.
Okay.
Donna, that's good to know and I, I thought you would say that. So uh, yeah, I mean, pros and cons to the uh, to, I mean, not just you, but pros and cons to the computer, community house. Uh, but I understand um, Town Hall is uh, you know, it's where, where things are, especially paper. So um,
Lots of it.
And lots of it.
Not that I I mean, we're not really talking about actually making a decision, but when Joyce and I were in the room talking to the folks from Ucatech. We did, um, you know, when you're looking at a PDF, that's a budget, for instance. Looking at, and it's a big room. You have to, we were basically the conversation was for the, the people who are sitting in the back of the room. And having those two additional monitors on the side is gonna give the back half of the room a much better view of what that document is when. And it seems like it's a big size, but that's a humongous room when, when you're looking at designing of, of system that's gonna work for for, for that room. And we don't wanna design the the system to, for the best case scenario, right? We wanna, we wanna design the system for the worst case scenario to suit the biggest number of people who would be attending a meeting. And that was where we added the, those two monitors, that it would help for the people in the back of the room to be able to view it from the, a little bit closer up. Um, the refurbished computer that is industry standard to use refurbished computers for that sort of single um, single use or single task. It's not like, it's, you know, acting as a server. It's doing minimal tasks and refurbished computers are, are widely used. So I, I don't have any concerns about that, but we're not making decision. So we'll leave this on the agenda for next month. I'd really like to um, figure out how to get this funded. Uh, emergency management. In the uh, Google Drive. We have a letter of resignation from uh, David Becker. I know that they're, he and Eric are doing storm prep and test site, test site stuff, but they did wanna come on the meeting. Uh, David's, David Becker, the Emergency Management Director submitted a uh, letter of resignation that reads, "I'm writing today to give my resignation with my last day as Emergency Management Director with the Town of Kent as January seven, twenty twenty-two at five PM. I've enjoyed my time with the town immensely and will miss working with the team. I'm grateful to have had the chance to work uh, with such a great group of people. Thank you also for the opportunity to be part of the town's unprecedented pandemic response during such an important time. I know the joint experiences that we had together over this time serve us all well in the future, while I remain open to coming to terms to stay in this role or reduce capacity with no movement on or compensation for almost two years and now the recently removed funding for LEOP, CERT and the Office build out. It's unfortunately time for me to exit. If there's anything I can do to ease transition, please let me know. I'm happy to help train my permanent or temporary replacement and I can be available periodically for the first few weeks in case they have any ongoing questions." So um, we do need to accept that letter of resignation.
Move to accept.
I'll second that. Any um, questions or discussion? I'm frustrated. I um, you know, again, I'm sitting here before nine thousand masks and two hundred and seventy home kits that um, we need to get distributed, which is, we're gonna work on after this um, meeting tonight and I'm hopefully will um, be able to get them to help um, get, you know, David to stay while we get this handled in the next twenty-four hours. I have, you know, concern and um, I wish we could have done something with the LEOP rewrite. But we'll, we'll just um, unless Glenn Rufus, you have anything that you want to um, discuss, we'll just accept his letter and move on.
Think that's what we have to do for tonight.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting David's letter of resignation?
I.
Regrettably, I. I don't, I don't know if they're gonna be able to hop on. So, next is peddler permit. Food trucks, um, that is gonna be on the January meeting of the um, of the P and Z. They moved it to that January meeting. Um, policy and procedure manual review. Thank you, Omicron. I, it's something we've gotta start to tackle, hoping once we hit this fourth wave, I think it is now, I've lost count, um, that we'll be able to dig into this, the manual. Um, Quarian Registered Letter. Um, I don't have anything further on that from Randy. Uh, COVID nineteen pandemic update. Um, we have been incredibly, incredibly busy, hectic. I think everybody um, lived through the uh, what went on last week, Monday, last, a week ago, Monday, we were um, asked to come on an almost no notice call with Homeland Security. Um, and then with the governor's office, uh, they were telling us that we were gonna receive a bunch of um, home kits. We were really excited. We had to um, do some really, really quick planning with David and Eric. Um, and then pulling in the CERT team, Bonnie Donzella. It was endless hours um, to make this distribution happen. And then by Wednesday, we had a three o'clock regional demos call. They um, pretty early announced that the uh, governor was going to have a call with all of the CEOs at four o'clock. Um, and then at four o'clock at that meeting, we were told that the kits were not, um, had not even left the ground yet in out in California. And I'm assume that everyone saw what happened in the following twenty-four hours. So we pivoted and went back and forth and back and forth. Um, and you know, one of the toughest parts about this whole thing was messaging out to the public. Every time I wrote something and was ready to hit send, something would change. So um, continued to pivot through Thursday and I think Friday we got word that we were gonna be getting, or maybe it was Thursday, we got word that we were getting N ninety-five masks. So we switched to that, which was a much bigger distribution. Was going from um, roughly five hundred kits to nine thousand masks to distribute to the public and all the schools. Um, Eric and David handled all of the school messaging, traffic, getting from them, what they were looking at as far as um, current testing capabilities, two of the three private schools. Um, when we did finally find out that we were gonna be getting tests, um, it was a fraction of what we originally thought. And then um, we were told that it was going from public first responder um, priority to all the schools. So now we had to take into consideration a fractions amount and also give them out to the schools. So the s- two of the three private schools um, did offer to give them back to the community, which which they did and we're very grateful for that, um, which enabled us to give out more kits to the public. And Sunday evening, we um, put together a distribution and I am really, really proud to say that our community really listened to the plea from Emergency Management from me um, to only come and pick up a test if you were symptomatic or if you thought you had been exposed. And we ended up giving out ninety-eight kits. We had a big, big rush at the beginning, but then things slowed. Um, so again, very grateful for that. Um, when you look at many of the other towns, they were completely buried in people wanting to come and pick up a kit to stockpile to have that just in case. Um, it was an incredibly, incredibly stressful week. Um, here we are at week two. And pivoted back around to the uh, N ninety-five masks, cause we were told that we weren't getting any more kits. Um, I have a few kits here in the office for the public um, with the same sort of priority. And um, I now have, I think it was two days later. I now have again, eight thousand four hundred and sixty masks and I think two hundred and seventy kits. So we'll be um, jumping on a call after this one to put together this distribution. Um, as far as our uh, case rate, it um, continues to, i- it's leveled off a little bit. It was sort of up and down. Our two-week case rate um, is running at about twenty-five cases um, over the two weeks. I think last week it was thirteen and this week it was twelve. Um, but it's it's much, it's higher than it's ever been, higher than it was in the original um, uh, infection rates, uh, higher than um, Delta. We had very low case rates during Delta. Um, this is definitely the, the highest, the biggest spike for us as it has been for the entire country. Um, our uh, test site continues to operate. We were, um, because of the, the issues with the capacity, because of um, this sort of panic in the last week and a half over tests and, and the, the rates. Um, the hospitals are getting very full. What, what we've seen um, at our little test site is and of quadrupling um, increase of use. So we were at the um, I think I have the numbers. Um, I get numbers every week from Semaphore. Um, before Christmas, we were running fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty-five. On the thirteenth, we um, we did ninety-one tests. The um, the week before Christmas, we went to a hundred and seventy-five tests, then we went up to two hundred and sixty-eight tests. And we're main, maintaining at that level. Um, DPH did call me a couple of weeks ago and we've been working on trying to find an um, an extra day. They originally wanted us to go up to six days for testing because of what was going on. Um, Semaphore couldn't support that. So uh, Semaphore is able to support one more day. So we're adding Saturdays to our um, our schedule. So it gives us also a good sort of battle rhythm for people who wanna get tested very regularly. Or have to get tested very regularly so that Monday, Thursday. Or have to get tested very regularly so that Monday, Thursday, Saturday with the twenty four to forty eight hours. I know that there are. A few people here and there who haven't heard back. We're addressing those as they come into us and Semaphore has been great about addressing those immediately to get those people back their results. Again, the capacity is so incredible. They've actually had to set limits on our daily of what, how many tests that they can swab for. So they were, the first week that they gave us a, a capacity limit was the week before Christmas. And again, we've been doing this for, you know, dozens of weeks. So to be told that you can only, you're only going to be able to test one hundred and seventy people was. When the week prior, we tested one hundred and seventy five people was a little bit of a shock. On that twelve twenty, that the team actually tested two hundred and sixty eight people. So they took more than they even said they were going to do and they've been trying to do that, but it's also a balance of. The, just the capacity there, you know, the, all the labs are at their absolute, absolute limit of what they can. What they can process. So it, it was then set at two hundred and two fifty today. We, we got word that today's max was set at three fifty, I believe. And I think it's going to be three hundred for Saturday. Again, if anybody was in line on Monday, they saw three o'clock in the afternoon. There was a very, very long line. This is, you know, we've staved this off, but it's happening all over the state. And I don't, I don't see this, you know, we're not coming out of this wave probably for a, a number of weeks. So anybody who needs testing, make sure you line up early, but I think adding the third day is. Is going to be a, a huge help to folks and getting out more home kits to people as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
David, do you have anything to add? He sees on the call.
Hi, yeah, no, not, not much on the testing front. I mean, we have been on. I feel like it's, it's email and, and conference call and all the other things. Bombardment again, almost, almost, almost as much as early on, maybe not quite as bad. To some extent that just, we're in a groove, so we don't have as many state. There's state calls and regional calls, but there aren't as many because so much of this has now just become second nature to us. But then it's all the internal ones and then after our partners and things like that, which is almost more. Because I think early on, there was all those different layers of things that have the unknowns. Now we have a lot more knowns, but we've got just exponentially higher cases. And while early on the cases were low and there was a theory that maybe the case numbers were slightly higher because testing availability was harder to get. Or things like that, I think we learned that the numbers now are probably the truly the highest of, of, of all. And on a, on a similar note, because of testing capacity, no matter how many different steps are, are done. You know, at home tests aren't, aren't, you know, accurately reported within the overall set of numbers. You've got to factor those things in and, and know that we're getting hit. But I think everyone's, everyone's doing a great job and, and, you know, we're, we're, you know, even that, that small lot, you know, the at home, you know. It was hours and hours of parsing through exactly, you know, how, how to try to, you know, meet, meet all the different groups. And, and I think the residents were. Were really good about. You know, just, just not bombarding. I mean, there were many towns where, you know, there's two thousand tests and there's ten thousand people trying to get them or some, some absurd number. And in this instance, there was a hundred tests and there were a few left over at the end because people really stepped up and, and, and said, I, you know, I'm here if I need it. If not, I'm not and let somebody else have it, which I think is, is, you know, is really a, a good thing that, that not every community had. So I think that's, that's a plus, but it's just. But with bombardment again.
Thanks, David, anything else on? Covid nineteen, we did just. Accept your letter of resignation. I do want to, you know, just thank you for. What you've done for the town for the last two years, you. David called me as a colleague from DPH and, and our time up at state. And he called, it was late February, I think, just to say, hey, have you been hearing about this and how are you doing? And. I asked him for some help with some minor tasks and then. Asked him to step in as EMD and he just. Took the ball and ran with it and he and Eric have been. A really, really great team to work with. There's just a lot that they handle and take care of in the background because they have all the relationships and. Know how to function in this sphere and I'm, I'm very grateful for the last, almost exactly two years.
Thank you, David, thank you, thank you for everything you've done for the town.
Thank you.
So we're going to move on to eleven over to. Subcommittee reports. The first is the ARPA needs assessment committee. And we need to, there's a letter of resignation from member Matt Starr in the Google Drive. The email. Resigning from that committee. So I will move to accept Matt Starr's resignation from the ARPA needs assessment committee.
Second.
Thanks. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? I. And we want to, I don't see Matt on the call.
If I could just thank Matt Starr for his, his work.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And we have a. An email from Glenn. That is from Connie Manis. Requesting reconsideration of her membership on the committee. And I'll happily make a motion to appoint Connie Manis back on the ARPA needs assessment committee.
Second.
The questions or discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I, thank you. Moving on to.
Can I interrupt for a second before we move on? The, the committee met yesterday and.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right. And the committee met yesterday and we had a long discussion about, about how to replace Matt Starr. How many, how many members of the committee should be on there? And we thought that maybe we should, we could get two appointments to have seven, an odd number, just in case of a tie break. If they're voting, so, so we do actually have two members of the community who are interested. And. I would like to. To talk about perhaps how to vote and nominate them.
So the practice has been that, and I think I stated at a, the last board selectman meeting that. I would send it out to the community like we've done in the past with my newsletter, which hopefully will hit inboxes tonight as well. So that's how we've done it in the past.
The, the committee, we, we felt a few things that I guess, you know, public calls went out over the summer. Or late spring when it was first formed. And then, you know, anyone can actually come to the committee meetings now, you know, so the public can still come and listen to deliberations. And then we're also going to have focus groups. Hopefully soon, there might be some scheduling issues, but there will be focus groups probably on Zoom now. So, so, so we are going to, to reach out to the public, continue, continuing to do that. But the committee did feel that because such good work has been done so far. And, and that we're, you know, we need a few more weeks to get it over the line here. That, and then two people are very much willing to do this. We thought that we could get them up to speed really quickly and, and complete the charge of this committee. So that we as a board of selectmen could, can start talking about what to do with these ARPA funds. So I throw that out, people are, are willing to do this and I think the committee, I think, I think the committee is willing to work with these two individuals. If, what do you two think?
I think that's fine. I think the committee, you know, knows what it's doing and I, I don't think, I, I. Would prefer that you go ahead with it. Asking them to join rather than going out to the town again. That's been done.
So if you want to put those in form of a motion.
Make a motion that the ARPA committee add the two interested.
So that just to interrupt you, the board of selectmen appoints these members. So we, we need the names of the members. And the motion needs to just state that we're pointing them to the committee.
Shall I give my name? Should, should, or should I do the motion or Rufus, do you want?
You do the motion, go ahead Glenn, it'll be quicker.
Okay, I move to appoint Ruth Epstein to the ARPA assessment committee.
Second.
Discussion.
Is there any discussion or questions?
That's yours.
All those in favor? Thank you.
And then, well, one more motion. Move to appoint Craig Bibb to the ARPA assessment committee.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Team none, all those in favor?
I.
I. Thank you. Glenn, if you could forward the contact information. I think Joyce probably has Ruth Epstein, but may not have Craig's. If you can just forward her the contact information so we can. You know, push them through the process to welcome them to the committee.
I will, thanks.
Anything else for your report for that?
No, other than that, we had, we met and the, the, the committee is moving apace, so, so thank you.
Great. Affordable housing plan steering committee, we haven't met this year yet, but I did get a voicemail from Jocelyn. So I will touch base with her. They, they will have. A community survey going out probably fairly soon. And we'll probably have more to talk about at the next meeting. The broadband working group, we had some scheduling hiccups, it's a bunch of very, very busy people. But we'll hit back at that to, to get another meeting moving. Kent sustainability team, we're in the process of. Oh, sorry, I'm not quite prepared to talk about this, but we're in the process of. Putting together a, a community activity and I can, I will be much more eloquent at the next board meeting. With some information. I'm just going to move on. Main street noise and traffic, that's Glenn and I know that you've been busy and it's been over the holidays.
I'll reach out to them.
Get a meeting kickoff meeting on the, on the board soon.
Yep.
Social services director hiring committee Rufus.
So we've got an interim in place. And now we're going to turn to. Going about the business of advertising and getting a permanent social services director going. So that's where we're at right now.
And do you anticipate that getting posted soon or are you going to sort of? Take a breather to get?
No, we're going to meet this. Later this week to, or not this week, next week to. Start figuring out where and how we're going to post.
Great. So the Ken sustainability team, there was not, that was a holdover from last month's agenda. There, they did not submit a written report, that was from last month, sorry about that. Streetscape building committee, they, there's a meeting Monday, I believe. No, I'm sorry, Thursday, the thirteenth, right Joyce? I believe so. The, the third, second and third easement were, they were finally. Hashed out and those are in the can. There's a final sort of review from DOT and I think that, that's. Close to being complete. But I, we can get, we'll probably get more information from the Streetscape committee. At their next meeting.
I've had no. Communication, I don't even know that, didn't even know until just now, they've scheduled a meeting. So I'd like to be included since I'm supposed to be on that.
Okay, we'll make sure that that gets corrected. Swift House Task Force, Glenn and Zan.
We met yesterday and, and Zan, I want you to take it over. Oh, you're on mute.
You're on mute, Zan.
We met yesterday and we focused in particular on remaining repairs and maintenance that need to be done to Swift House. We have some prices at consideration. We agreed that the priorities were working on some of the most essential. Exterior repairs. As well as trying to put the main living room, meeting room into a serviceable condition. By simply painting the walls and getting rid of the stains and making it freshening the air in the, in the building. We will, of course, be working well within the budget that's been provided for these. Purposes for Swift House. And. I guess that's it.
Zan, I. Billy Potter brought over. A picture album of repairs that. He did back in. The nineties or the eighties, I'm, I'm not sure exactly of the Swift House. So I'm assuming you'd be the person to give them to?
Well, I would be very happy to have them, yes, it would be nice to see what's been done when. We also have a report that I think. Let me see, who was it that was responsible for that? A report that was done. In the, in the nineties that recommended things that needed to be done. And particularly the roof that was supposed to have been done in two thousand and nine. And we have taken those instructions into consideration too, as we've worked on things. But most, most of the things we're working on are pretty visible and. There isn't really any debate about whether they need to be done, you know, door sills, window sills. Missing pieces of, of clavard. We have finished the roof and the chimney and very pleased with, with those results. The roofer has to come back and do a little bit of cleanup in the attic. But other than that, the, it seems sound and there's one area of the second floor. Where. We need to put some attention into the inside ceiling where there's had been prior rodent infestation. And we want to clean that up and make sure that it doesn't turn to black mold. But other than that, most of the work is either outside or, or just freshening up the living room for it. So that we could put the building back into use again.
Sounds good.
Good, okay.
I'd like to do a quick piece of housekeeping. We. Neglected and I apologize, Dan, and Ed. To, to get Ed back on the committee, it was a recommendation, he was interested. It was a recommendation. He was interested. Uh so I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ed Matson back onto the Swift House Task Force.
Second.
Thanks.
He's been very helpful and we're happy to have him officially back.
Awesome. Sorry for that.
By the way, one of the things that he did was to take it on himself to um treat the exterior of the building with his own equipment to get rid of the algae and mold. And that's been a much great improvement in the visuals of the front of the building.
Alrighty. Um all those in favor? I, thanks, Zan. Um Selectmen's Report, I just wanted to get a consensus in an effort to get a little bit more efficient with our meetings. I'd like to get the board's thoughts on um taking the, all these subcommittees that we've created are, you know, I I think many of them are sort of gotten in their groove and have a nice rhythm going in an effort to um get things to go a little more quicker. I I'm just trying to see if, see your thoughts um to, for asking these um the various subcommittees and, you know, would largely be on on you all to provide a written report once a month. Um and it it's simple, can be a simple paragraph, a simple bullet point um update for the board, but also for the public so that they can, the public can go in. And instead of having to get an update via reading, you know, four sets of minutes or watching a number of Zoom meetings, if someone really wants a high level um just information. And it would help us because we can say Broadband Working Group, they submitted their their written report. Um it's in the Google folder. If anybody, does the board have any questions? And then we can continue to move on. Just looking for your thoughts on that.
So each of the subcommittees, they do have a secretary who are, and they're taking notes?
Pair, well, they're doing minutes. They have to do minutes. They're required to do minutes.
So those minutes, so you're, so this is in addition to those minutes?
Well, it would likely be um be on the Board of Selectmen Liaisons to work with the chair. If they're not also the chair, to just high-level written paragraph, couple of sentences. If there's nothing to report, they can say that there's no report, that they're just continuing to do the work of their committee. It, you don't have to, you know, make something out of nothing. But I think it would help the efficiency of these meetings if we can say these, the reports were submitted. The board of selectmen reviewed them. They're there for the public. They can access them at any time. And again, they don't have to learn about updates from the committee by having to read minutes, having to watch Zoom meetings.
Okay, so what I can do is um, you know, attend the ARPA meetings, the um the Main Street Noise and the Swift, the three I'm on. And just give a nice write-up.
Yeah.
What was talked about and then put that in the Google Drive and we can all see.
Okay. Yeah, or send it to Joyce and, cause she usually populates.
Yes.
She creates a new folder and then populates the um, you know, all those documents that would be the supporting documents because it also rounds back to how we um build the agenda. And I'll send out an email in the next couple of days to all the committee chairs to, to start this, this sort of routine once a month. I'll figure out, you know, how we need to get it so that we get it in enough time so that it can get into the Google Drive, onto the agenda. So Joyce isn't, you know, running around white-knuckling this, you know, the day before the day of.
Okay, yeah, I see. Do you want this once a month, uh you know, once before um which one of our meetings? I mean, so.
Yeah, probably the the first meeting.
Month, okay.
Yeah, and I'll, you know, I'll talk with Joyce tomorrow and figure out, you know, what day she would like it um in her inbox by or in the Google Drive, wherever she wants it to get populated. Okay, I don't wanna overthink this. I don't wanna make it harder for anybody. I'm just looking to create a little bit of efficiency for part of our meetings.
If you look at tonight's meeting, Jean, the subcommittee reports took very little time.
Yep.
The only report submitted.
Hasn't always been that way.
Wasn't even talked about. You skipped that. So you're.
No, I had sent for the Kent Sustainability Teams. Right, Kent Sustainability. The Kent Sustainability Team didn't actually submit a report. I hadn't said that. So there have been, there have been times where these, this piece has taken longer. I'm just looking to chip away at the, and I turned my iPhone on late. Um but we're at two, two hours and forty-seven minutes. I think it's, they're gonna get um.
Shorten these meetings. We have to come to the point quickly and 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 as Glenn and I both asked, we need to have all, you know, documentation, budget upfront, ahead of time.
Yep, I I completely understand and agree with you. Um we do need to make sure that, you know, it's if, if there's something that's on the agenda um and you want more information than what's in the Google Drive, it, you need to just check in with us to make sure that we provide that stuff. And again, we're setting, settling into a new rhythm here. Two meetings a month, new board. I think we're gonna get there shortly. Anything from the other selectmen?
No, just to reiterate, more information in the Google Drive helps me make decisions. So um, yep, that's it.
Rufus, anything for your report?
I'm good.
So we will adjourn at six fifty-five. Thanks, everybody. Stay warm, careful driving. Thank you, Rick and the team for what you're gonna do overnight.
Yep, thank you.